Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A. Disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Assessor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, September the 2nd, 2025. City of Taft council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may also be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org and can be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting and all comments received shall be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by councilmember Chavera, followed by an invocation from Pastor Sean Piper. So if you'll join us, please.
Go ahead, over here. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, sovereign Lord, we come to you recognizing that you are ultimately in control of all things. But you've given us responsibilities here. Help us to fulfill them well. Help us to know what is good from what is not, and to protect from harm, and to use the freedoms that we have for the best purposes. Despite our best efforts, you know, Lord, we're going to make mistakes. So when that happens, help us to correct them and go in a better way. I pray for all of the officials, for the officers, police, fire, the people who watch over the city and protect it. I pray that you give them courage and strength, that we could all live in peace, and help us to do well, and that our city will be well. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Sean. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
Councilmember Chavera.
Here. All right, first item on this evening's agenda is a proclamation. We actually have a couple of them. I've asked Mayor Pro Tem to please read the Hunger Action Month presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my honor and privilege to read this proclamation given on behalf of the City Council of the City of Taft, declaring September 2025 as Hunger in Action Month in Kern County. Whereas hunger and food insecurity affect thousands of children, families, seniors, and individuals in Kern County, creating barriers to health, stability, and opportunity. And whereas the Community Action Partnership of Kern Food Bank is the largest hunger relief organization in Kern County, distributing more than 22.5 million pounds of food in the past year alone, the equivalent of 18.75 million meals to families in need throughout the network of community partners, mobile distributions, and choice pantries. Whereas Hunger in Action Month, CAP-KA, Food Bank joins Feeding America and food banks across the country to raise awareness about hunger, inspire advocacy, and encourage community engagement to end food insecurity. Whereas in 2025, the Kern County Food Policy Council has been relaunched to strengthen the collaborative efforts between the public agencies, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and community members, building long-term strategies to improve food access, nutrition, equity, and sustainability across the county. And whereas the CAP-KA Food Bank has distributed nearly 765,000 pounds of food to food insecure neighbors in the city of Taft, demonstrating its strong commitment to serving families and individuals facing hunger. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council does hereby proclaim September 2025 as Hunger in Action Month and calls upon all residents to join in the fight against hunger by supporting local hunger relief efforts, advocating for stronger food systems, and taking meaningful action to ensure every neighbor has access to healthy nutritious food. Signed this day by the mayor and the remaining council members.
All right, I do believe you all have a video to share with us, is that correct?
Yes, that link, she sent along a link, is that?
Yes, we're going to play it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right now, families in our community are going hungry. Not next week, not next month, today. Mothers skipping meals so their kids can eat. Seniors choosing between medication and groceries. Children going to bed without dinner. This is happening, and it's happening here. At the CAP-KA Food Bank, we're doing everything we can to meet the need. We're distributing food across Kern County every single day. But it's not enough. Our shelves are thinning, our funding is drying up, the need is growing. Federal and state support has been cut. Since 2020, we have been stretched to the limit. We have the trucks, we have the warehouse, we have the team. But without immediate support, we won't be able to keep up.
I do think this community is going to take a hit from the funding cuts. We're already seeing it in the community food giveaways. There's a lot of young people out there that can physically go and work, but these seniors, they need it the most.
We rely on the partnership. If it came to a halt, it'd be like going back to COVID. And just to be honest, right now, you guys are in need of donations. Tell them the community that whatever they can do to stand up and speak up and partner, if it's volunteering, if it's through donations, you guys have been very, very instrumental in helping organizations across Kern County.
Working in the field, and everything is so expensive now. So this is a big help for us.
Everybody's struggling, it's not only me. It would be kind of hard for us, you know, not to have this kind of stop, so I hope they won't stop it.
The partnership with CAP-KA in our pantry has just excelled our growth and allowed us to serve many more folks than we ever could have imagined. We've been able to not only expand our services, but expand our space to access refrigerators and freezers that we could have never purchased before.
We're not just funding programs, we're funding students, and we're funding educations, and we're funding the future.
Food insecurity with students, it's very real and exists every day. Sometimes it's the difference in whether or not a student can attend class that day.
Sometimes the only fruits or vegetables or actual nutrient-balanced food that students get is from the food pantry. And without it, I feel like a lot of students would be impacted.
When I start seeing kids come over here and start putting bread in their pockets, and you know, we hear that they sell their EBT cards, they're going to do what they can to provide for their families, you know, because I know that they ain't got food, no telling what's going to happen, you know?
These aren't strangers, these are your neighbors. The single mom you see at school pickup, the veteran down the street. The family working two jobs who just can't keep up with rising costs. They need food, they need hope, and they need it now.
CAP-KA is very vital to our community, and it's really needed. It's really needed in our community, and you know, it's priority.
People is trying to change their lives, you know? It's more than just that little help that I thought I could get. I can see how people walk away with a smile, you know, happy. You know, it's like something big happened for them for the day, it touches your heart.
Just $25 can feed a family for an entire week. It may be the only meal they get. This is not a future problem, it's not a someday problem. It's a right now problem, and you can be the solution. Please go to capkay.org or call now. Make a donation, fill a fridge, feed a child. Be the reason a family eats tonight.
If anyone can. You had mentioned, and I'm glad that you did, but I will reiterate, that in Taft, CAP-KA distributed more than 764,000 pounds of food in 2024. The local partners that serve as access points here are lifelines for families, seniors, and children facing food insecurity right here in your community. Some of these include Five Loaves Pantry, Need Center, New Hope Temple, and St. Mary. To bring awareness to hunger across Kern County, we have prepared several opportunities for community members to get involved this month. Today, we had our kickoff with our press conference. It brought a lot of people together, community leaders. We kicked that off at our food bank. We have a community blood drive happening September 5th. We have partnered with Houcheon Blood Bank to do that, to help us advocate for needs in our community. Hunger Action Day is actually September 10th. And so we ask that if you're so liking and you own an orange Hunger Action shirt, you can go online and purchase one, or just wear orange that day and say, "I'm supporting Hunger Action Month." That is actually Hunger Action Day. And with that, we'll be out at Channel 17 on Compassion Corner. We'll be having a food drive all day long from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, as well as doing a drive-through deep pit lunch for anyone who wants to pick up a sandwich. We also have a community box building day. This is a great way to bring volunteers together. Also, high schoolers can come out on that day and build boxes from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We're expecting at least 100 people, if not more, to build boxes that day. And then, of course, we partner with the Kern County Fair each year. It'll be on September 23rd. And this is where, if you bring six cans of food, you get into the fair free. So these are all wonderful opportunities. We invite the Taft community to come out, if not to one, to more than one, and just support us. We appreciate the partnership we have with you. I brought a couple little posters I'll leave with you, too. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and community partners. On behalf of the Kern County Food Policy Council, I want to thank you for recognizing Hunger Action Month with this proclamation. Our council brings together organizations like CAP-KA, The United Way, Blue Zones, Kern County Superintendent of Schools, various Kern County departments, CSUB, Fakersfield American Indian Health Project, Kern Health Systems, Morning Star Farms, the Black Farmers Associations, and others who share one goal: building a healthier, more food-secure Kern County. We know hunger does not exist in isolation. It's connected to health, education, workforce, and quality of life. Here in Kern County, too many of our neighbors struggle with hard choices between paying for food, rent, medicine, or childcare. Hunger Action Month reminds us that food insecurity is not a challenge for someone else to solve, it's something we can only address together. The Kern County Food Policy Council works to strengthen our local food system so that every family has access to nutritious, affordable food. From supporting choice pantries and school meal programs to building partnerships with healthcare providers and local growers, we are aligning resources across sectors to ensure no one in Kern County is left behind. Tonight's proclamation is not just symbolic, it's a call to action. We invite every resident, every business, every institution to be part of this work. Whether it's volunteering, advocating for policy change, or simply reaching out to a neighbor, we all have a role to play. Thank you for lifting up this issue and for joining us in the belief that ending hunger in Kern County is possible when we stand together.
Well, thank you, ladies, very much. Do you have any other information you want to share with us? Okay. All right, wonderful, if you'd leave that with us. Mayor Pro Tem Bryant, you read the proclamation, sir? We'd like to take advantage of a photo op with you ladies. You wore the right colors. Yeah. Basic black is perfect.
Over the weekend, I looked into the need center and stole both of me and other things that were very important and sound recording.
What day was that? Are you photobombing them, Doug? No, thank you. Thank you all, very much. Thanks for coming and sharing everything with us, and thanks for the work that you all do. Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is another proclamation. This is for Suicide Prevention Month, which I will read. This proclamation from the City Council of the City of Taft declaring September 2025 Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas September is recognized nationally as Suicide Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness about suicide prevention, promote mental health resources, and support those affected by suicide. And whereas suicide is a public health issue that affects individuals, families, and communities across all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances, and is a leading cause of death in the United States. And whereas the City of Taft is committed to fostering a compassionate community that supports mental health, reduces stigma, and encourages individuals to seek help when needed. And whereas effective suicide prevention requires collaboration among local government, healthcare providers, schools, community organizations, and residents to promote access to mental health services, crisis intervention, and education about warning signs and risk factors. And whereas by promoting open conversations about mental health and providing resources such as the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, we can create a supportive environment that saves lives and offers hope to those in need. And whereas the City of Taft honors the memory of those lost to suicide and stands in solidarity with their loved ones while reaffirming our commitment to preventing future tragedies through awareness, education, and action. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Taft does hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in Taft. We call upon all residents, organizations, and businesses to join us in raising awareness, reducing stigma, and supporting mental health initiatives to prevent suicide and promote hope and healing throughout our community. Dated the 2nd day of September 2025, signed by myself and all four council members. Do we have somebody here to accept this? No. Well, ever so briefly, suicide, very unfortunately, and it happens, I think 74% more in our veteran community than it does outside of former military service. I do believe there was a point in time, it's been a couple years ago during the drawdown, that suicide took the life of a veteran every 22 seconds in the United States of America. That is a tragedy. Those people deserve our support, our help, and intervention. So awareness is a critical component, and you've heard that multiple times here. Be aware, look for the signs, and be a friend. Be there to help somebody. So, anybody have any comments on that?
I'd like to tell a little story.
Yes, sir, be our guest.
A friend of mine told me this story. And he was in the Marines. And everybody came back. Nobody got killed there. Everybody came back. But over time, each one of them committed suicide, up to just him and one other, his best friend. And his best friend, I don't know where he is from, but he's telling me the story that he got a call from his son. And the wife of his best friend had a car break and got killed. He killed himself. Every one of them, except the one here in Taft, has made it so far. Suicide, that's sad. I just thought I'd mention that, because you need help, you need help.
Well, you're right, you do. And it's across the population, you never know where it's going to happen, but there are warning signs, and we need to be cognizant of it, and it takes everybody, so thank you for sharing that with us. All right, next up, item number two, citizen requests public comments. Do we have any, we have none this evening? Well, that saved me a great deal of reading. All right, then, item number three would be council statements non-action. Councilman Chavera, begin with you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I just got two items. First of all, I was reading Mrs. Orin's post. As we all know, Mr. Ron Orin has passed on. But I do know that they're having a celebration of life for his his hopes was to live until his 75th birthday. Unfortunately, he didn't make it, but they're still going to celebrate his birthday and a celebration of life. And that is taking place on September 10th at 5:30 PM at Taft Veterans, yes, the Taft Veterans Building. And the family is asking if you're interested to please join, and they sure would like to see everyone wearing a Hawaiian shirt. And secondly, you know, we were talking about the homeless, and I completely understand their concerns. And, but there's always two sides. And I think that we, as a community, just, we need to make sure that we understand that we do have vagrants that I believe it's related to drug addictions. And we just can't support that type of lifestyle and behavior. We have a community to look after. And so if the community is observing or seeing any type of criminal activity that's related to these vagrancy, we need to continue contacting the police department and allowing them to do their job. We just cannot, and we will not tolerate this type of behavior. And we do thank the police department for following up. And just one more thing on that. If you're reporting a criminal activity, it's imperative that you make yourself available so that you can provide a witness statement, so they can follow through with it. And that, that's all I got, sir.
All right, so in essence, there can't be a crime unless there's a victim. If you're going to call in, if you're going to report it, you need to stay there, let law enforcement know that you will be there when they come to deal with the issue, as well as write the report, and hopefully, we can change the behavior pattern. So thank you very much for that, sir. Councilman Waldrop?
I'd like to mention, we lost another very good citizen of Taft, very, very good friend of mine. In fact, he died on his birthday Friday. He was 82. And that was Bill Nichols. You might know him or his wife, his gullaria. Anyway, really going to be missed. Thank you, sir.
All right. I worked with Bill Nichols many times over the years, and he was a stand-up guy.
Yes, he was.
A great guy to work with, great guy to work for. Councilman Cryer?
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we did a proclamation for the hunger in Kern County. And it brought to my attention that between Sunday and Monday, somebody broke into the need center and stole about 500 pounds of frozen meat and broke into other areas in the pantry and took a lot of things. And here is the need center, and it's all volunteers trying to help the poor and the people who need things, but we get some idiots out there that think that they want to hog it all for themselves and possibly try and sell it. So if you see anybody out there passing, trying to sell meats or anything that looks suspicious, report it. And because it doesn't hurt this month, as far as the need center goes, it's the health of needy people here. So it's kind of ironically, having the proclamation and this happening, it's just crazy. But to tag along with Councilman Chavera, you know, I've been, I know a lot of our councilmembers are probably getting stuff from the citizens concerning things going on in Taft. And, you know, a lot of the issues on the railroad trails. And believe me, I know our mayor goes up and down the railroad trails. I know the police department goes up and down the railroad trails. And I go up there once a while, not as much as I should, but I'm going to have to start doing it more often to see it. And if you see- But I'm gonna have to start doing it more often to see it. And if you see issues and stuff, take photos and send it to the police department or, or save it, but call the police department. It may take them ten minutes to get there, but stay, hang around like Councilman Shavara said and give a report of it because they can't do anything unless somebody files a complaint. And, and, and don't be afraid. If, if you need help, call a friend or somebody to be there. But we want the railroad trails to be a nice experience for everybody, to be able to walk up and down without being hassled or having to look at obscene things that goes on and, and drugs and stuff, you know. It, it, we, we think we've done a good job keeping it clean, but some things just happen to be in our control. But we need the citizens there to help us on that. And I guess can't tell you how much the, we, we have a small police force. But a lot of times crimes don't happen because of our citizens. We have people coming in from other areas, coming from Bakersfield, coming from South Taft, coming from Ford City, coming from Taft Heights, coming in here and causing idiots, it seems like it's everybody in our town is all criminals. That's not the case. But keep, be vigilant and report it because it, it don't take much because we are a great city and I think we respond real quick. And when I get messages and stuff, I do respond to them, answer back. And I also try to respond to it and ask questions to our police department and to our, our mayor and our city manager, Craig Jones, the things that I've heard, are we, anything we can do about or something being done already? So, we're very proactive at what we're doing. And one more thing, just be careful, school started, so I've got a lot of people out there using the crosswalks, crossing the streets. They still haven't learned how to use the button yet to cross the, the crosswalk. I know it's a pet peeve for the mayor.
It is.
But, you know, do that because your life you save is your own if you don't do it. Because sometimes at nighttime, if you're crossing a crosswalk, we don't see you. It's hard to see you at, in the evening, especially when the sun's coming down, you're driving and going towards the west, it blinds you. And, and so have the crosswalk, have the signals going. It will definitely increase your chance of survival. But it's, it's watch out for the kids and that's all I have to say, Mayor.
Alright, thank you very much, sir. Mayor Pro Tem Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna piggyback on the gentleman before me, both Mr. Shavera and Mr. Cryer. It was really odd because if Orchard was talking and I was literally thinking those exact words almost, so either he's, maybe your eyesight's getting better, Orchard? That was awesome. You, you hit the nail on the head. The, the unfortunate truth is the world is not what it was twenty to forty years ago. California certainly is not, and as a result of that, largely Taft is not. But at the end of the day, it's, it's always going to be imperfect and fall short of the way we'd like to see things. Doesn't mean we can't speak up, doesn't mean we can't offer feedback and criticism or any type of feedback. But my, my encouragement would be, you know, to the folks, remember what Gandhi said, be the change you want to see in the world. Don't just complain about it. Get out in front of it to the best you can. And I'm not, I'm not trying to throw stones anyway. I'm just giving people advice. Please, if you're willing to bring it up, please be willing to do something about it as well. Because I know you, if it's valid, you'll have support. If it's not, unfortunately, a lot of times folks won't get behind that. But at the end of the day, it, it's easy to be an armchair quarterback. It really, really is. It's a lot harder to get up and do something about it. It is very sad that on the month where we have this proclamation, that you have a, a break into the magnitude that we saw. I mean, five hundred pounds of meat's not a small amount, right? It very likely had to have been somebody that knows that that was there and has intent. They don't have a storage area for that likely at home. I know I probably don't have five hundred pounds of meat storage available at my house. So, when Cryer, Mr. Cryer mentioned something about selling it, that's very likely. And it's sad that somebody's gonna go make off a, a profit off a donation that was intended for folks who were experiencing hunger insecurity. Experiencing those things at home, now they're not even gonna have the opportunity to have those resources to them because someone's selfishness, because of our, our public policy, especially in this state and the impact it has in a place like Taft. I mean, just very disappointing. I will remind folks that at schools, the universal meals mandate came out last year. And as much as it might cost a taxpayer, it's a good thing for those kids at school. Every single school-aged kid that goes to any of our public schools here in, in the city or in outlying areas has access to at least a free breakfast and a free lunch every day. In many cases, and I know this is the case at the high school, they're gonna get a supper meal that's completely on the house and some snacks. There's not a reason that those kids shouldn't have a meal every single day, at least five days a week. Now, we've all been kids. We all know that there's a stigma with cafeteria food and I think at the end of the day, those tides may or may not be changing, but at the end of the day, I, I'm thankful that we can provide that resources to kids who may not have those resources available to them otherwise. And so I'm very, very thankful for that and I want to remind folks, when your kid says, ah, I need money for lunch. Ah, you may want money for lunch and I may want to give that to you, but you may not need it, right? And the last thing I'll do is to kind of piggyback on the, the negativity to start with, is to spin that a little bit. And I want to say thank you to everybody that serves the public here in the City of Taft. From the police department to our folks here at City Hall and especially our folks in Public Works. You're gonna see a lot of stuff here, or you have probably already seen a lot of stuff the last couple of weeks. I know one on the corner of Hillard and Highway thirty-three is a perfect example. They're out there busting their humps, even on private property at times when they shouldn't have to do that. The property owners should be the, the folks doing that. But they're, they're making sure that it's clean and it's safe for our residents. There's plenty of times where you're not going to see the work that they're doing underneath bridges or places that are a little bit more hidden to help try to keep those things safe and clean for everybody that lives here in the City of Taft. And it's not a safe or clean job to do. So, to the folks that do that every single day, thank you for what you do. It may not ever get seen, but I'll tell you what, if it wasn't seen, it'd be a heck of a lot bigger problem. And I'll end on positivity here. If anybody's interested in, in putting some good out in the world, the West Kern Oil Museum is having a volunteer work day on September thirteenth. I know we're still probably about two weeks out from that. Go out there and spend, you know, from ten to twelve. Spend a couple of hours helping weed along the fence line or fix up things that might need a little bit of TLC, but it's a great way to get involved in your community and for a staple in our community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, very good. Thank you very much. I wanna, I wanna dovetail on the Hunger Action Month presentation. I think it's crying shame. You're constantly hearing our governor brag about the fact the State of California is the fourth largest economy in the world. I mean, he makes that boast almost daily. And yet, according to the United Way, thirty-six percent of all the families in the State of California live near or below the poverty level. One out of every five households in the State of California is behind on their utility bills. We have a severe food insecurity problem in the State of California, the fourth largest economy in the world. We have a severe energy insecurity and the energy insecurity leads to energy poverty problem in the State of California. And yet, nothing changes. And this problem hasn't been getting less. It is just exacerbating year in and year out every year. So, one thing that the lady did talk to us about is, you know, you can volunteer at those places. You can do a lot of things to help with the issue. One of the things she mentioned was policy change. I don't know if everybody picked up on that. Policy change. Well, not all of us write policy because if we did, then a lot of the bad policies that have created these issues wouldn't exist. But as a layman, there is one way. Every registered voter can affect policy change. The State of California has been a one-party state for twenty years. Twenty years. So, the things that are going on right now are basically owned by that party and that direction and that ideology. So, if you're wondering, if you're sitting there wondering, how could I get involved in policy change? Vote. Know what you're voting for, know who you're voting for, know what they stand for. That is how you affect policy change. That is how you have an impact on food insecurity and energy insecurity and poverty in the fourth largest economy in the world, Gavin, if you're listening. Anyway, that's my take for this evening. Next up, department reports, item number four. Do we have any department reports this evening? Alright. LT, welcome to the party.
Sir. Gentlemen, if you'd allow me to step in for the chief in his absence. Department report, I'll try to do it just as he does. For August of 2025, the Taft Police Department responded to a total of one thousand and sixty-one individual incidents. That made up for four hundred and forty-five of those incidents were calls for service and six hundred and sixteen were officer-initiated incidents. Out of those, there was a total of seventy-one arrests with, I believe it's sixty of them being misdemeanor level arrests and eleven felony arrests. Your Taft Police Officers are doing an outstanding job. Currently, we have two that are going through field training, so they're in, I believe, this week makes the second week of field training. So, we will be, as they say, fully staffed once they are done training and, and on the streets. But, and thank you for the kind words because it is frustrating. Nobody is more frustrated than the police officers that are making arrests, clearing people out and then, you know, seeing that same face within a matter of hours back on the streets. But we've all seen and I don't think I need to reiterate, we've seen some, maybe some, some positive news coming out of the State of California and even the county, so we'll see where that leads us.
We'll have, we'll have some, some opportunities that we haven't had in a while and we can enforce those policies and, and help the lawbreakers understand that this is a land of laws and that the people insist on a healthy, safe community.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate that. It's funny you should bring it up because I gotta tell you, I just wrote down on my notes while you were talking, FTO, new officers. And I don't know if you read that through a reflection of my eyes or something, but I want to thank you very much because we did, we had the opportunity to watch the badging of our two new young officers and they go in the field with FTOs and, uh, homegrown. So, that's a wonderful thing.
They're homegrown, they've hit the ground running, they are excited and it's kind of nice to see. They still have their fresh creases, their shoes are polished, all their brass is shiny. So, we hope that carries for the next twenty years plus. Excellent. They're doing a great job.
Alright, thank you very much for bringing that to us. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you may.
Officer, excuse me. Can you clear up a couple of things? I know you guys run a terrific job and stuff. A lot of complaints about the rail to trails. In your opinion, have you made any, have, have, you seen any improvements going on? Or was there, are you fears of an issue or is this bunch of baloney going on on that road?
No. Councilman McCrier, in fact, we had a discussion about it this morning. So, I took it upon myself to actually travel every foot of the rails to trails this morning. And, and I went through the entire town. There is an issue with homeless or unhoused or, or whatever we label them right now. There is an issue there out there. Many of our, are, many of them here in town, they've got places to go or they've got family. But family is choosing to not allow them at their house while they're addicted to whatever their, their vice is. Whether it's drugs, whether it's alcohol, in many cases, drugs, alcohol lead to a, a mental health issue. It is at certain times of the day or the night, it becomes a, a bigger gathering. And in the locations, it becomes a bigger gathering depending on what is happening. Whether it's trading of foods or, or, you know, looking for the shady spot on a hundred-degree day. However, we have discussed it, we have shared it with the supervision staff and, and it is being addressed. And yes, the Facebook posts that they're going through, we monitor that as well. We see where the, the public's concern is at. And, and we ask, and I'll reiterate what was already said, we would ask, when the public sees that stuff, please contact the police department. We are one of the, the rare departments that we respond to every call for service. Even if it sounds petty or it sounds non, you know, consequential, I don't know the word or not.
Inconsequential.
There you go. Thank you. We respond to those calls and we'll determine at what level at that point. Do we make an arrest? Do we, you know, move them on at their, you know, request? Do we help them? Many of the officers are buying bus passes out of their own pocket if that's what the person wants. Because we have learned that Kern County has a, a, a regional bus, a Kern regional bus. And somebody might have gotten on the bus in Bakersfield and ended up in Ridgecrest and then down to, to Arvin Lamont. And then they end up in Taft because, you know, it, it looks like a nice place. You know, we will do what we, you know, need to do at that. So, you know, at what level do we call it a problem, an issue or a, or a, you know, a concern? Yes, they're out there. I personally, I work in Taft, I spend the majority of my time in Taft. However, I live in Bakersfield. Where we, I get the same sights as I get here, you know, driving to my house or going to the grocery store. And, and it's, it's frustrating and I, and I say a joke to a lot of people when we go. If you can figure out how to solve the homeless crisis, you will probably be on the cover of Time Magazine. You will win a Nobel Peace Prize and every municipality will probably hire you to, to solve that. I know that I say that a little bit jokingly, but, but it's out there. And like you said, Mr. Bryant, this is not the world we lived in twenty years ago, maybe even not even ten or fifteen years ago. But your officers are, are responding to every call and they're addressing it in the manner that they are equipped to.
Thank you for expressing yourself on that because I'm sure a lot of people are listening, will hopefully hear it and, and act on what you had to say. Hopefully they'll be there to point things out. Because it, it, a lot of people just all talk, basically. They don't see nothing, but they hear one person say an issue. All of a sudden, it compounds it to another deal. And I don't, I didn't want to mean to put you on the spot or anything, but you did perfectly in what I expected to hear from you. And I think the people out there in TV land will appreciate too what you're saying because you're, and the officers are trying to do a great job policing our, our city. And it is that there's, there's a few people that can make the city look bad, unfortunately. And that's the way life is. If you want to solve homeless, like I've been a few countries, just got back from one country, is they don't have homeless. Why they don't have homeless? The family takes care of their own. Other than that, if they don't, there, there's no, there is no safety net. You go hungry. You have, you be out there in the outdoors in the forest or in the rainforest or somewhere and they don't have homeless. And, and the cities are all nice and clean. But that's the one way of doing it, but unfortunately we've got rules and regulations and laws and a lot of people out there that has concerns. But anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have, I have, if you don't mind.
No, Councilman, please.
Listen, this is a great opportunity for us to ask you questions and for the viewers. And my hopes is, is that all those people that are on Facebook are viewing right now.
Please.
So, I just have a question, a couple of questions. Is it illegal for the homeless to gather?
It is not illegal for the homeless to gather. It becomes illegal when that gathering turns into a criminal activity. If they're in public, alcohol, that's a problem. Drugs, problem. Using the restroom in public is a problem. However, the gatherings, and to clarify, many people that they, their gathering spots seem to be, whether it's the Rails the Trail Park or Pickup Park or, or, you know, or a store and such. The city adopted a very, very effective program with the signs, with the no loitering, the no trespassing signs that gave an avenue, gave an avenue of enforcement. And yes, it's a very low-level, how would you say, penalty to somebody. It's at the lowest level. You're probably gonna end up in a, in a citation, whether it be a fine, maybe even eventually to a court date. It's gonna be a low-level citation, however, it's, it's staying on them. But yes, the gatherings, it is not illegal to gather. But it is illegal if that gathering turns into an encampment or, you know, a open-air.
Any type of criminal activity.
Yes, absolutely. And I might say on, just as you said there, the people that are on Facebook, if they ever have a concern, they're welcome to call me. Most of the town knows me, most of the town knows the chief or, or the sergeants that we have. And most know us by first name. Please call the department. If there's a, a, a cause for concern in one specific area, If there's a, a, a cause for concern in one specific area, because we know, when we put, put some pressure on one area, they're gonna move to another area. And, you know, sometimes we're proverbially kicking the can down the curve, but it's not so much that, we're, we're, we're trying to address it. And then, you know, many of them go from the city out to the fields, and then under a bridge, and then behind a store, or whatever it is. But please call the department. I would be more than happy to address it and, and then, you know, take it out of the hands of the, as we call the, you know, it's easy to put all the criticisms behind a keyboard, but I'd be happy to sit on the front porch of your home and chat about it and address it.
So, what about if you, if we observe a vagrant sleeping somewhere in the, in the community?
Well, I mean, that'll.
Is that, is that, is that a law?
It all depends on where it is. You know, there's, there are ordinances for camping, but you might go back to the location that it be. If, if somebody is, is sleeping or loitering in an area that's been designated, then, you know, that would, that would definitely be an issue there. However, you know, if, if, taking it all the way down to if we're talking about parks and such, you know, are they sleeping, are they camping, or are they, you know, relaxing in the, in the sun as they, and I say that with air quotes there. It's, it's different for every situation. That's why the easy answer is, is always, if you see something, say something to us, call us. Because even if a call comes in from a citizen, and they ask us to go investigate something, we're gonna go. I mean, I mean, unless it's just, you know, somebody says, hey, there's, you know, alien spaceship landing on top of the Albertsons, which we'll probably still go to that too, but, you know, we go to every call. And not a lot of police departments in California can say that they go to every call. They are prioritizing, they're sending people to online reports, they're, they're asking people to, you know, or they're telling them, you know, let's sit on hold for twenty minutes while you wait for an operator, come on. That is not the TAF Police Department. We are staffed, we are ready to respond, and we do respond. And our usual response time is literally, you know, in many cases, under a minute. But there again, you know, depending on circumstance, it could be longer. But please, please, please call us with any concern.
Wonderful. Final question.
Yes.
Final question is this, if, or, what do you feel is the biggest challenge in dealing with vagrances from the state?
Well, it might be beyond my pay grade when we say that here, but I think the biggest issue right now is, is if, and it's not necessarily vagrancy, because that's a, we could say that has to do with mental health, we could say that has to do with the rehabilitation that whether it didn't happen, isn't gonna happen, or they chose not to happen. But when we come down to, to, I think, what a lot of people are talking about is criminals who also are vagrant. And I think that, that deal, and this might be a personal opinion, is when the people go and they, they are held accountable for the crime that was committed, and that crime could be at any level, or it could be a warrant that the, you know, the person has failed to appear on. But when they get arrested and they get booked, and there really isn't any accountability now, because unless it is a violent crime, or unless the, you know, the person is, is being held for, for a high, high-level felony, they're promptly released back on the street. They never have an opportunity to, to go in front of a judge. They never have an opportunity to, to go to that system where maybe they can be ordered to some kind of a, a treatment facility. Maybe there is another option there. But I will tell you, we are typically encountering the same person. It would almost sound comical if I told you how many times we are encountering, arresting, issuing citations to the same person over and over. And I understand, I understand that the county has only so many beds. I understand that courts are just, you know, they are just stacked on a daily basis. But there has got to be a, a solution to this, because if nobody is held accountable, are they really going to follow the rules? Are they really going to, you know, accept the consequence? Are they gonna look at it going, hey, another ticket? All right, I'll take another ticket. What do you think they're doing with that ticket? I say that in kind of a, a, a.
Look paper.
So, thank you, we know what you guys are doing. Uh, it's important that the community hears that, and two, just know that you have our complete support in continuing doing what you guys are doing and putting on pressures, excuse me, putting pressure on, on these criminals. Uh, I understand that some folks are homeless and they need the help, but we are referencing those who are conducting criminal activity uh, because of their, whatever it is, drug addictions, their, their, that leads to mental disability. But again, we appreciate what you guys are doing, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One final thought, and that is you said, and actually Mayor Protem alluded to it, it wasn't that way some years ago, it wasn't that way. And it wasn't. It began with prison realignment, Assembly Bill 109, followed by Prop 47, backed up by Prop 57. All bad pieces of legislation in an effort to close prisons and just leave those guys out on the street, guys and gals. So, policy, we talked about that, that leads into food insecurity. Here again, bad policy. So, we know we wanna do the job, we passed, we being over seventy percent of the people in the state of California, passed Prop 36. Prop 36 is supposed to mend some of the problems with Prop 47. There's a process whereby these repeat offenders, if they get hooked and booked, and finally, then they make their way up to a point where they're gonna spend some time behind bars, where they can get cleaned up, get the help they need, and hopefully get out of this vicious cycle of recidivism. So, that is the intent of that. In practical terms, it takes funding, and it takes bed space, it takes prosecution. You're right. The first step is gonna be law enforcement and hooking them up. So, uh, thank you guys very much. Thanks for all the time with us this evening. I know you didn't come prepared to spend so much time up there, but it's certainly been informative for all of us and for all the people right there behind that camera.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Okay, any other department reports? All right, item number five, City Manager's Statement, City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on the same subject, we've been working with special counsel on modifying some of our TAF municipal code as it relates to the trails, the parks. So, those will be coming before you, hopefully, the next couple council meetings for your input, consideration, and first reading, hopefully. So, hopefully, that will further delineate what can and can't happen on the Rails to Trails.
All right, very good. Okay, following that, City Attorney's Statements.
Thank you, no statements.
All righty. Item number seven, Future Agenda Request this evening, gentlemen?
None here.
None?
Sir.
All right then. That brings us to Consent Calendar Items Eight through Eleven. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would wish to comment on? Raise your hands, please. Seeing none. Those items are, item number eight, which would be the minutes for the August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five regularly scheduled meeting. Item number nine, the payment of bills, some two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars worth, right at. Item number ten is the award of Public Works contracts of Kern Asphalt Paving and Ceiling Services and Bowman Asphalt Incorporated for purposes of an on-call service, services list for asphalt maintenance services. Recommendation is a motion to approve Public Works contracts with Kern Asphalt Paving and Ceiling Services. Also, Bowman Asphalt Incorporated for on-call asphalt maintenance services. Authorized, the mayor to sign and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, is set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines. And incidentally, I wanna thank our local petroleum ministry for providing the critical materials necessary to maintain our asphalt roads. We reached out to those people in the wind and solar industry, and thus far, they have been non-responsive regarding that, so. Item number eleven, Special Event Permit. Carnival by Showepner Shows at Supply Row and Sixth Street, September twenty-third through October the eighth, twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve a resolution entitled, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft approving a special event permit authorizing Showepner Shows to operate a carnival on city property at Sixth Street and Supply Row from September twenty-third to October eighth, twenty twenty-five, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, is set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
None, none here.
All right, hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items Eight through Eleven.
Motion.
But that was like a straight-up.
Motion.
So we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second. Motion second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shavira?
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, now pass on a five-oh vote. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Item number twelve, Twenty Twenty Five Annual Military Equipment Report, City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. On September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, AB four eighty-one was signed into law to address the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment. AB four eighty-one requires law enforcement agencies with the approved military equipment use policies submit to the governing body an annual military equipment report for each type of military equipment approved by the governing body annually for review, as long as the equipment is available for use. The attached report has been completed to meet the requirements of AB four eighty-one and is now being submitted to the council for review.
Thank you very much, City Manager Jones. You know, it's interesting, this Assembly Bill four eighty-one, one of so many, always requires if somebody has to gather and submit information, and somebody else has to receive that information in government, and they have to do something with it. Well, just to give you an idea of the way things have been going, since our current governor became the governor, in the year twenty eighteen, when he took over the governorship, the office of the governor of the state of California had one-hundred-fifty employees assigned to it. Currently, there are three-hundred-eighty-one. That's the growth of government under Gavin. So, just thought I'd throw that in there. All right, the recommended, recommended action is to review the port, report, and then entertain a motion to receive and file the Twenty Twenty Five Annual Military Equipment Report and find that the activity is not a project per the California Enviro, Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, is set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines.
Motion.
Second.
I have a definitive motion and a definitive second. Any other discussion on this item, gentlemen?
What happened to the Howitzer?
Oh, that's right, he's gotta bring it up here. I'm sorry, I reviewed the whole thing, but. Okay.
Hope we have good questions coming after this. Okay, Twenty Twenty Five Annual Military Equipment Report. Assembly Bill four eighty-one, AB four eight one, codified at Section seventy seventy through seventy seventy-five of the California Government Code, requires law enforcement agencies to obtain approval from the governing bodies of military equipment use policies before purchasing, raising funds for or acquiring military equipment. This initial body must be passed via ordinance, then reviewed and renewed by the governing body each year. AB four eight one provides an expansive definition of military equipment that includes many items which law enforcement agencies use, deploy, and obtain on a regular basis. The law enforcement agency is required to return annually to provide a military equipment report, parentheses, annual report, to the governing body and the public at large. The law enforcement agency is also required to host a community engagement meeting for members of the public to attend. A military equipment use policy governing the use of items that are deemed military equipment is required under AB four eight one. On July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, the TAF City Council adopted a military equipment use policy by ordinance eight four seven dash two-two. Since then, the TAF Police Department has successfully maintained the milit, military equipment in accordance with the policy. This annual report has been prepared in accordance with Govern, Government Code, Section seven zero seven two, subsection A. The TAF City Council will provide an open forum for public on October fifteenth, this is twenty-four, but I believe that's gonna be dated twenty-five, in the city council chambers. My assumption on the date. The following constitutes the date, the TAF Police Department's annual report. One, the two thousand and six AM General Armored Humvee. Use of equipment, none, concerns and complaints received, none, internal audit results and response, none. Total annual cost, including acquisition, personnel, personnel training, transportation, maintenance, storage, upgrade, and other ongoing costs, approximately five hundred dollars. Funding source for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, to the general fund. Quantity is one. Future acquisition plans, none. The two thousand and six AM General Humvee, use of equipment, not used. Concerns and complaints received, none, internal audit results and response, none. Total annual cost, including acquisition, personnel training, transportation, maintenance, storage, upgrade, and other ongoing costs, approximately five hundred dollars. Quantity is one, future acquisition plans, none. And finally, the two thousand and eight BAE Systems Armored MRAP. Use of equipment, not used, concerns and complaints received, none, internal audit results and response, none. Total annual cost, including acquisition, personnel, training, transportation, maintenance, storage, upgrade, and other ongoing costs, approximately six hundred dollars. Quantity is one, future acquisition plans are none. And that is the military equipment report.
That is the sum of the report. For everybody out there in TV land that aren't familiar with what they up-armored Humvee, or a general Humvee, or an MRAP are, these are military vehicles. And they needn't necessarily be used for civilian uprisings or criminal issues. They could also be used to respond to environmental emergencies or natural disasters as well. And especially in flood-prone areas, they use a great deal of equipment like this, because they're very good at getting to places where normal vehicles, fire rescue units cannot get. So, that is actually the main reason that they are procured by the City of Taft from the military surplus. So, thank you very much, sir. Any additional discussion on these things, gentlemen?
I still think a Howitzer would be awesome on Friday nights with the Wildcats score, just launching off blanks. I know I may be in the minority here, but I think it'd be pretty rad.
Certainly look into that as we, as we draw down from some foreign country. All right, we have a motion and a second, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Shavira?
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes, now pass on a five-oh vote, thank you now. That brings the open session portion of this evening's meeting to a close. This council will be going into closed session for one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two or three of subdivision D of Section five four nine five six point nine D, one potential case. I wanna thank you all for being a part of these proceedings. Remember, this is your government in the City of Taft. Especially, I wanna thank Lieutenant McClurg for all the time you spent helping educate everybody in the City of Taft. Those of you who listened to what he had to say, please, spread that information. Be a part of the, the lifeline of the truth, it helps us. This meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned.